No change to the cameras or anything, it's software that we already own. But IT is integrating the two.
And the feedback I get from residents is they don't want to see assessments. We don't have any assessments other than our canal assessments. They don't want to see that. They'd want to see maintaining everything within the mileage rate. At least that's the feedback I've been getting. So it's, if we're going to lower it, I think lowering it to a, where, there's a level is what, where I'm.
I'd like to say something after Lynn.
Well, I have to, I agree with you Nancy, because I had so many emails in the last eight months that Mark Gearing is sick of talking to me and Bob Nicula is sick of talking to me. And I have a file folder that I actually set up with all the complaint emails that I got. And I actually have them saved in my computer as a swale drainage program folder. Because I've had so many people contact me. It's because the unintended consequence of starting the program a few years ago is that now everyone expects us to have the program. So I'm not in favor of deleting it entirely. I think we should phase it down. And I've said this last year. I think this is a good first step. And maybe next year we drop it another 150,000 until we get to a point where we have a manageable level of what has to be done ongoing. But to eliminate it 100% right now, I don't agree with that.
I understand your point, except I think that we have to make a decision that's just uncomfortable. I think it was uncomfortable when the decision was made in the first place. I think it was uncomfortable when the decision was continued. It's still uncomfortable. And at some point, even as you phase it out, there's still going to be problems occurring. At some point, you're going to have to say, okay, now when do I enforce it? We're sitting here with a lower than suggested reserve.
Understood.
We're sitting here with 1.5 instead of 1.8 employees per thousand. We don't have people to cut. We've been having a wonderful ride since 2008 with the economy going. But we know from history that what goes up, comes down, and then it goes back up again. And when it comes down, the decisions that are tough now are going to be even tougher then. Because then what's going to happen is not only are you going to cut this program, but you're going to increase the mileage rates at the same time. And you're going to make people who are already economically hurting rather than putting money away while there's still some comfort. So I think it's a decis, it's a very tough political decision. I think that we need the courage to make that tough decision. We didn't make it last year, we didn't make it the year before. I think it's time to make the decision. I don't, if it's this year, if it's next year, whatever it is, we finally have to make the decision. And I just feel very strongly that now is the time to make the decision because it's already too late to make it last year or in the year before. It's time to make the decision and show the political courage to make a very tough decision and do the right thing financially for the betterment of the city. And that is to have people be responsible for their property.
In my opinion, the drainage program, the way we have it designed, is not it. Because it's, we have educated our community that this is the way we're going to handle it. And for us to do cold turkey, oh my goodness. That's going to be a mess. And, and we've been there. And, and when Mark first made the presentation, a number of years ago, Mark, wasn't it about $2.5 million or between $2 and $2 million worth of work that would need to be made to, to bring, to fix the problems? And, and there were, and we were only putting about 15,000 a year toward all this. It was some big number.
He had 1,700 logged complaints of problem areas, $1,500 per lot to do them. And my recollection is that we were at 60,000 to 80,000 a year in drainage reworks.
Not a lot. Still not a lot.
It wasn't a lot.
It was not a lot.
And I also remember, I, after, after the presentation, I went out and I thatched my own swale. And it wasn't that big a deal if you do it yourself.
Jaha?
I have to agree with you, but I, I think we should plan on a two-year phase out. I think that residents really don't know that grass is not suitable for Florida. And I think that just stopping it will be a problem. I think that, I think with this reduction, we need to do some educational component to let people know that they literally have to do their grass differently. But they, I think they don't understand that the root systems are sideways and that it doesn't let water down. And I think without informing them of that and just cutting it could be, again, we're just going to be inundated with complaints. And that's all it's going to lead to.
I think we, we need to keep it here until we can come up with something. And we've talked about this before. I don't, I, you know, that's what I do as a Florida master gardener, is educate people. And I've had conversations with people about thatch. But I will tell you, some of, you know, our homeowners, they look at their property and they see their beautiful lawn. They don't see what's beneath the surface.
Or we could do a drop dead. We could do a drop dead. We can say that this is being phased out in two years and that, I mean, we can make that part of our plan, saying that, that we, we need our residents to understand the grass they have. And we're, we're reducing this year and next year there'll be further reductions, something of that sort. That may be a way to approach this.
Well, it's either.
I mean, I'm agreeable to this right now.
If we had a way to ask people, which would you prefer? Would you prefer us to have a program where we take care of it? And we, we take care of all this and it's going to cost you money? Or would you like for us to save you some money and you're responsible for it? And we could find out. It seems like most people are wanting us to take care of the problem.
They also want to have adequate fire and police protection. And I think if you ask them a trade-off, they're not going to say, fix my yard, I'm sorry. That's not been the reaction that I've received from people when I bring it up. Just saying.
This is not trying to reduce garbage collection to once a week.
Oh my, good grief, do not do that. Don't even go there.
I rest, I rest my point. This is not the holy grail.
So where are we on this?
We've been kicking the can down the road. We can set a date in the future that, okay, the can is done. It's only going to, we're only going to kick it a half a block this year and a quarter block next year and then not kick it the year after. You can decide to do it if you want that way. But we've been kicking the can down for three years. And now it's become a habit. And that just makes the decision even more difficult. If you, if you have an illness and you catch it early, it's easier to treat. If you keep kicking the can down and you let it fester, it becomes harder and harder and more difficult. And that's what I believe has been occurring here. And the far, longer we go, the harder it will be to rectify.
I say leave it the way it is, at 350. I think, Mark, you've given us the best guest, estimate of what it would take this year.
Yes, we think we're getting a good handle on the backlog. When we came to you with this problem four or five years ago, it was totally out of hand. We had complaints from everybody. Nobody was happy with what we're doing. Today, we're able to show them pictures of who got in the work program, why they're in the work program. It squelches the complaints and people understand why they're not in the work program. I think next year, we would certainly be, have the data to, to come back. Maybe we can reduce it again and get it down there to the 80,000 that it used to be. But we've got to get that backlog of the years of buildup, we've got to get that down.
Can you do less than 350,000?
Certainly, we have not authorized any work for this whatsoever. We'll be taking the videos this summer and then reviewing those videos. And we will set our work program to the budget that we have. If we have $100,000, we'll find $100,000 worth of work and set the program. That just means the, the level of service will be dropped to match that.
Mayor? I just want to be clear about one thing. I am not trying to address any issue where the infrastructure has been inadequate and we need to provide such as in the Boca Grande neighborhood. If, if a block was done wrong infrastructurally, then I do think it is, behooves the city to, to handle that. But when it's been a maintenance issue because of our neighbors, I think that that's just something that we shouldn't be taking the responsibility for. And with that said, I want to say the program technically has been very successful. I'm not taking issue with what, what the, the program has been able to, to accomplish. I'm just taking issue with the way that it's been taken on by the, the city and spread across every neighborhood that has concrete gutters instead of swales. They're paying their portion of that repair too. And I just don't think that's right.
Well, if you take that approach, then you can eliminate it to zero. Because there will be areas that have nothing to do with thatch.
I understand.
Right.
Well, and, and I, and I'm not taking issue with those issues. I absolutely agree. If, if it's 80,000 or it's 100,000 and that has to do with maintaining city infrastructure appropriately, that's fine. I don't have an issue with that portion of the program.
I think we need, in my opinion, we need to keep this and, until we can come up with a program. And I, I don't know that, that it's even possible to come up with a program to educate people. I think that that's a plausible objective. But I don't know that we can achieve it. So.
We ask people to clean the roofs when we have somebody from the city drive by and determine that the roof is too dirty. What's the difference between that and a swale?
Because you can see the dirt on the roof.
I can see the water on the road.
Yeah, you can see the water on the road. But what people don't see is the thatch beneath the grass. So let's not get into a technical discussion on this. Okay.
Could we reduce it? Could we take it down?
We can take it down to nothing if you want to.
No, you've already told us we can't. So I'm saying, could we take it down to 200?
We will develop a work program to whatever number you give us. If you give us a number that's very, very low, I, as a staff, we just want to caution you that the number of complaints will go up. And you're going to have to deal with that.
Well, there's a learning moment. I think if we reduce it a little bit more and there's a little bit of stress on residents having to do it correctly, it may be more beneficial to make it a little bit more stressful.
But we don't have a program to educate anybody on what they should be doing.
Well, how about when they call? And then, and then the staff says, well, this is actually not an infrastructure issue.
I have, I have had conversations, individual conversations with residents and explained to them what the situation is. And told them, if they were to call me when I'm on the plant lifeline at, over at the extension office, I would tell them exactly what they should be doing. And they don't want to hear about it because they want somebody to come out and fix it. And so that's what.
You're making my point.
Yeah.
They want somebody to come out and fix it.
You're making my point.
No, I'm making my point that I, we cannot reduce this by a whole lot. Because we're going to create a problem.
I think the question that needs to be asked, the asked, the question is, is how much of this budget is towards thatch and how much is actually towards the appropriate infrastructure that wasn't put in appropriately that's under the umbrella of the city itself? Rather than on the, the property owner or the contractor.
We're not going to be able to solve the thatch problem right now. We need to come up with a number here.
Okay, can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
What if we were to reduce it to 300 for this, for this fiscal year? And then next year, drop it down to 100? Because you're saying the ongoing maintenance used to be around $80,000?
60 to 80,000 several years ago.
So if we dropped it to 300 for this fiscal year and then drop it down to 100 in the following calendar year, then we're going to get back down to a manageable level. And we're still going to be able to do some problem solving. And that's still, and, and see how we go at 300. If it, if we decide it isn't enough, if we, if the complaint level rises immensely, we can readdress it next year. But with the intent that we're going to phase this program out as far as what we've been doing. Does anybody have any thoughts about that?
I'm agreeable with 300. I, I think we need to come up with an educational program.
Yeah, I agree with that too.
Because you just can't, we're going to start getting emails unless we come up with some kind of a program.
We're going to come up with emails whatever we do.
Yeah, okay.
Whatever we do, we come up with emails. It doesn't matter what the issue is.
Rather than put this in a maybe, because we're, we're, we need to move on here.
Yes, we do.
Do we have enough people who are willing to go from 350 to 300 for next fiscal year?
Yes.
Well, I hear three. So that's three out of five. So that's, we can put in 300 as a placeholder.
Okay.
And we'll talk about it more. That's just a placeholder.
For direction, do you want us to show in the future years, the 100,000 or 300,000?
Well, that's just, we're going to talk about it some.
Okay.
We'll talk, let's put 300,000 in right now, reduce it 50,000.
The next item was, currently for the road resurfacing program, the general fund contributes 459,000 to be added to our gas tax revenues to have that program in place. One of the suggestions is maybe reducing that 100,000 for road resurfacing.
How will that affect our ongoing?
It would, it would be that much less that they could do in a year. So again, we're not recommending this particularly, but it is an option.
Because there's some streets that really need it that aren't on the calendar for another four or five years and.
Right. I just got a complaint this morning out in the hallway.
I'm on the exact opposite fence as I was on the previous issue here. Resurfacing roads is maintaining asset and infrastructure in the city and shouldn't be compromised.
Mm-hmm, agree.
So that's a no.
Yes.
That's a no.
The next one is currently the general fund is funding the $50,000 for the historic district initiatives. We started doing this when we eliminated the CDBG fund. Again, whether you want to leave the full 50 or reduce it or, again, it's not necessarily a recommendation. It's just up to you for discussion.
Now, we're still waiting to see the results of the infrastructure study. We don't have it back yet.
I am supportive of this if it's infrastructure only.
Yeah, and that's, that's what we committed to. We committed to infrastructure.
Right, but we, this year we gave some grants out.
Yeah.
And, and I know that's really noble of us to do that. But I don't think, given the conversation we're having, that we can.
No.
I'm with you 100%.
I agree.
100%.
So infrastructure only?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so the reduction is a no, but infrastructure only?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Elimination of a fire inspector. Again, this would reduce service. It would decrease fire, pre-fire plans, lead to non-compliance with ISO rating, delay follow-up on non-compliant inspections of state licensed facilities, longer timeframe for plan and permit review of new construction, decrease of customer service, because they would not be available for community education or fire extinguisher training, et cetera.
Now, for the community standpoint, you're going to see, over the next number of slides, eliminating positions. Because that, that's basically how you get savings in a general fund. We're not here to scare the community. We're here to inform the community that because we are so lean, this is what happens when you eliminate some of these positions. And based on the budget meetings we've, the community budget meetings we've had, based on responses we get from folks in the community, based on expectations of trying to at least maintain what we have, we need to show the community what's going to happen. We only have, we have a fire marshal and one inspector. That's it. And look at what happens if we eliminate a fire inspector position. And this is going to be the same as you, as we go right down this list. And again, we're not trying to scare the living daylights out of folks. But they need to understand, we need to understand what would happen. Again, we are not recommending any of these.
I don't support it. I don't.
No. Can I say no on this one?
We're in agreement. A no on this one.
Elimination of assistant buyer position. Again, it would be a reduced service to, there's reduced response times to the divisions, delay in processing solicitations for projects. It would reduce our audit, invoice audit recoveries. Because currently someone goes through a lot of the invoices from the things that are purchased by the divisions directly to make sure we're getting the proper pricing. Inability to manage insurance for contracts, reduces competitive market, market due to inability to research and locate new prospective vendors. And it would reduce our auction proceeds, because we probably have to outsource that particular function.
Now, the public is not going to see this.
Yeah.
The person on the street, they're not going to notice that, that we have one less person in procurement. We will notice it.
Well, we will notice it because when you tell us how fast will something turn around.
Exactly. How long it takes to do bidding and, and, we will notice it as an organization.
I mean, when I look, go on the Florida League of Cities website and look at different areas of the state and what the FTEs per thousand, you know, we're at 1.5, that's really respectable. So I think where we are is very respectable within the, the state of Florida. So it's, I think, offering these and giving an explanation of what it would do, any of these to the, to our service levels, to the community, is important in this discussion. But whether we actually act on these is.
I'd just like to point out, there's something in here that's poignant when in any position that we leave, that we would eliminate, that there's also potential costs. So when you look at invoice audit recoveries?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. If you eliminate a $43,700 job, you're really only saving $5,000 based on history.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And you're taking on a greater risk with all these other reductions of services. And I think that you can probably make a case in virtually every position that we're going to be evaluating as a potentially cut. Because we're only at 1.5, folks, we're not at 1.8.
So are we all a no on this one? Okay.
Elimination of a code compliance position. Again, reduced efficiency in the delivery of services and customer service. It becomes more reactive versus proactive. There'll be delay in addressing complaints, issuing permits, returning calls, shifting responsibilities, reduces the availability for booking park rentals and event permits, delays in lot mowing program inspections, work orders and invoicing, reviews of building plans, reviews of zoning applications, and preparing legal ads and reports. Because again, the, the shifting of the duties would cause other delays for other.
Definitely no.
I agree.
As it is, we can't, we can't get things done fast enough sometimes.
I was going to say, you guys talk about emails with swales. I get emails on code compliance.
So do I.
Yeah, well, I get those too.
I don't get swales. I guess that's not a problem.
Somebody sent a memo out in the community and they all email me about swales.
Oh, good.
Yeah. But what I'm saying, the swale issue, before we started the program that Mark started with, and we, we funded it to a half a million dollars a year, we were deluged.
Yes, we were. Yes, we were.
Again, elimination of an urban design planner position. You have your efficiencies and customer service to developers, extended review time of application and reports, less frequent attendance at meetings such as the ILA, housing, MPO, tech, et cetera. You have extended review time of projects, reduced neighborhood interaction, less time for grant writing and administration, reduction in the quality of presentation materials or delay in producing those materials, less time for project management and administrative services.
Absolute no, not in this.
Definite no.
I don't think you can go into a master plan and then cut your urban design.
I know how hard everyone works right now and how much we are praised for our responsiveness and, and how much we help our community. That would just go, we would really, yeah, anyway.
And I, and I sat in on the design studio meeting last week and the applicants come in and they're like family and they're, I mean, it, you know, everybody just has a really good comfort level communicating and they, and they're very good at it. So yeah, we, this, we can't do this one. We can't.
Again, another service level reduction for police would be in their community services program.
No.
I think we need to have a crime, let's get it done program rather than. And we don't need to watch neighborhoods or anything.
No. No, you got it.
Elimination of a parks and grounds service worker. Again, it'd be a 20% delay in non-critical but very appreciated services. The reduction in services would have caused delays in general maintenance such as emptying garbage cans, doggy waste stations, mowing, weeding, sprinkler maintenance, putting up holiday decorations, inspections of playground and exercise equipment, maintenance of the city entries and beautification areas, and delay in other special projects that come up that they handle.
I mean, if we want to have a beautiful city.
No, no. We need to maintain the look of our city.
And if anything, we're getting complaints that we should have a, a parks department.
Yes.
Yeah, recreation.
Yes, we are.
Parks and recreation.
We don't have a recreation department.
No.
And elimination of a right-of-way service worker. And again, same kinds of delays in the non-critical but appreciated services. They include sidewalk repairs, mat installations which are for ADA, patching and repairing streets, mowing and trimming, stormwater facility repairs, the bridge inspections and repairs, catch basin drain, cleaning inspections, sign maintenance, traffic counts, ditch cleaning, and assisting with the prison work squad and other special projects.
And this is more of a, again, the infrastructure, keeping up the appearance of the city. And you see what it is.
Another no.
No.
Okay.
I'm bringing up the lot mowing. Just, we're not currently, don't have all the information yet because, you know, we have the new vendor and we'll review it again over the summer and we'll have, be able to come back with a full recommendation. But the contractor may increase 3%. Again, personnel salaries were budgeted at 3% increase. Still evaluating the new contract and whether additional mows should be budgeted in a fiscal year. And we'll bring this to you again in a future meeting.
Mows, trims, on sidewalk.
Yeah, we have all of that in there now.
Yeah.
So, you know, we've got the wet season coming up. We may be able to maintain the rate, we'll see.
Right.
I would, I would say, if you have to increase it, it's such a deal as it is.
Yes, I agree.
Really? I've never heard that before.
But that's also self-sustaining because the people pay.
It is.
Right, right.
Self-sustaining.
We just review all the expenditures before we can make the recommendation. We're going to move on to the information technology fund. There are some new capital requests. In all the funds, it was budgeted a 3% increase for computer overhead. With these different additional items, it would cause more than a 3% increase. So, and for the general fund, it's 72.5% approximately of the IT goes to the general fund. So capital requests exceed the computer overhead charged and would require an increase to all the contributing funds. So the first item is GIS tools. And they were asking for approximately 20,000 to 55,000, depending on how far they want to be able to move with the GIS in a particular year. So this would purchase digital receivers, antennas, cameras, drones, et cetera. And as more data analysis and reporting is used, these GIS tools are required for the departments to gather and process the information in the field. So it would affect the general fund approximately up to 40,000 if you, if it went all the way up to the 55,000.
We just started this program and it's, it's really doing well. It's really hit the ground.
That's what Todd is working on?
Yes. Yeah, it's, it's, it's moving forward and it's helping out quite a bit, working with all the various departments. So we do need to put some dollars into the GIS to keep it going the way it's going right now.
Well, in some of the things, it's really providing information to the residents. Like, one of the weekly reports, you said that they're going to be able to actually, a resident could go in to find, put in an address and find out if the vacant lot was on the program or not. Those kinds of things, which, if it's helping provide tools, that's really very useful.
Brad Schute, IT manager. Exactly. And one of the issues that we have, as Howard said, the, the program has hit the ground running. We, with, with the, the staff that we hired, Todd has done an amazing job. And, and we're, we're almost a year ahead of schedule as to where we expected to be at this point, bringing somebody in and bringing, bringing this in at the ground level. These tools are important because they allow us to make sure our data is accurate. And before we can share data with the citizens, we need to know that the data that we're gathering is accurate, that the data is up to date, it is current. A lot of what we've done to this point, we've been able to build off of historic data and off of the, the data that we've had existing on paper for many years. But to really move things forward, we need to be able to gather data and we need to be able to gather it accurately. And that's what these tools would allow us to do.
Problem. I'm fine with it.
Okay. So that sounds like a yes?
Yes.
Are we doing yes up to the 55,000?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Well, we have 39,000.
That's the general fund portion.
Yeah.
General fund portion.
So.
Oh, okay.
So the 39 is the general share portion of the 55,000.
Gotcha, gotcha.
So, okay. The next one is the virtual desktop upgrades. So. So, the current WISE virtual desktops are no longer capable of delivering adequate performance as a desktop replacement. They're very slow. They don't handle the video well. They don't offer ability for expansion. Newer units have better functionality and allow continued use of virtual desktops as a viable alternative to a full-size desktop computer. And we're, IT is requesting thirty thousand total, general fund share twenty-one thousand, seven fifty.
Again, these are more internal items that the public is not going to notice, but we do internally. We notice.
What are these? I mean.
What, what, we've got several places in the city, rather than buying a full-blown fifteen hundred dollar computer to put in place, we put in place, it's a small box that connects to the network and relies on a server without trying to get too technical to do all of its processing rather than having it done at the desktop on the computer. This allows us for administrative functions, people that just check email and write an occasional memo in Word and, and work on different machines of where we've used them in the past. But what we've noticed is that in some of the, a lot of areas with the new capabilities in virtual desktops, we can put a, a, a six hundred and fifty dollar unit in place where it would normally take an eighteen hundred dollar or higher-end graphics computer. It reduces our costs for equipment replacement because the WISE clients last a lot longer and you can fix, you can upgrade them through software as opposed to having to upgrade hardware. Making these upgrades is going to allow us to be more efficient with, with equipment replacement money. It's going to allow us to be more, to put more functionality in places where a full-blown desktop might not fit well, but by giving them a, a virtual desktop and running it from a central location, they'll have higher functionality and, and, and better access to tools that they need to do their job.
So, what's your pleasure? Okay, we're getting a yes on that one.
So, the next one is Granicus. It's an ongoing, after the initial purchase, there's an ongoing annual subscription of thirty-five thousand per year. So, just want to make you aware of that. It's not a one-time, cost-only. The protocols are not adequate to manage and maintain meeting minutes, video, agenda, and the citizens review at levels that meet the expectation of citizens. And with the ADA requirements, it makes it necessary to overhaul and add some new functionality.
The key here is the ADA requirements. Well, you know, you know what's going on with the.
Yes, yes. So, this is what we need to do, take care of that.
We just have to do it.
Well, it's a start.
This is, this is a start. The company that Granicus recently purchased Vision Internet, which is the company that we built our website through, they purchased Novus, which is what Novus Agenda that we use for all of our agenda management. They have a much more holistic offering of, of packages that get into citizen engagement, minutes management, video management, as well as agenda management and website. And, and their product integrates all of this together. So, this is a first step at adding maybe the first two pieces of, of what Granicus offers in the, in the terms of minutes management and in the terms of citizen engagement and, and then the ADA compliance through video. Being able to take our video that we put up on the website and tie it to an agenda so that somebody could go to our website, click on an agenda item and there's the minutes, there's the, the video for that agenda item as opposed to having to watch all the way through, plus the closed captioning. They have a more robust closed captioning piece than YouTube currently offers, so it will allow us to improve our closed captioning. It just makes our data more accessible and makes it, gives, gives the clerk's office a better tool for managing.
Okay.
Let's go.
Good. Yep, that's a yes.
The next one is electronic timekeeping. Again, there's a, the first year would be thirty-five thousand with ongoing annual subscription of twenty-two thousand per year. The implementation would eliminate a large percentage of hands-on processing and approvals at the various levels. It should result in significant savings in gathering and processing payroll.
This item came up and none of you were on council at the time. This came up back in around two thousand eight, nine, maybe? And it was very expensive. So, we dropped it. Council said, no, it wasn't the right time. Now, it's come in at a more reasonable timeframe, cost. And there are two departments here that would save a considerable amount of efficiencies right off the bat. That would be police and fire, and even some of the other larger departments, public works and utilities. When we go to electronic timekeeping, it, it's more internal efficiencies and savings of having to do all of the payroll-related items. It, it's just, again, the public's not going to notice that, but we are.
One, one of the other items that's, that's not as clear in the explanation here that, is that this comes with an advanced scheduling module that handles the very specific type of scheduling that, that the police department and the fire department use with managing shift swaps, managing the litany of codes that they have to apply. That's all done on paper right now. And this is going to automate all of that and allow them to manage it better and do it with much, much fewer hours.
I don't see the chief coin.
Yeah.
To me, to me, it actually has a return on investment because it's going to free up hours so that our, our talented staff can spend their talents doing other things for the city.
Yeah. Okay.
And the last one, again, this is one you saw last year and is coming back to you, is for a computer support specialist, which would add one FTE to the information technology division. The position would allow proactive support of divisional needs by working in set locations daily. So, they would go to the utilities building one day, public works, city hall, things like that.
This would help fix computer areas that are broken.
Well, again, in the last couple of years, we've, we've moved staff into more of systems analysis functions because of, of the, the expanding need with more mobile devices, with more intricate networks. And, and our tech, who used to just do break and fix, is much more involved in asset management and managing the net, the, the, the equipment and, and the day-to-day functionality of that. And that's taking more and more time. So, when you add in the installation of, you know, thirty or so computers a year with our computer replacement and our break and fix, it's just very difficult for us to sometimes get right on a, a, a break and fix item. And then, at times, the departments will have something that's broken that they haven't reported or it just kind of gets pushed aside. And so, they'll show up at that department to fix one problem and somebody will say, oh, by the way, we've got all these other things that we need attention to. This tech is going to allow us to free our existing staff to continue to do the, the, the behind-the-scenes management that's necessary to keep things functioning cleanly. And we're going to dedicate them, as, as Kristen said, rather than living in the IT office, they're going to live one day at each of the locations. So, we've got four locations, the public safety building, Cooper Street, the plants, and, and then city hall, city, city hall annex. By moving location to location daily, they're going to be there to handle those problems on a much more frequent cycle. We'll do a better job of tracking the work that we do and we're going to have somebody dedicated. So, we're expecting that it's going to increase our closing of tickets in a, in a much shorter timeframe by as much as twenty percent. So, it's going to allow us to provide much better service, allow us to provide the, the people, the existing staff to do a much better job of running everything behind the scenes to make it more efficient as well.
I'm looking at my, my team here to see.
I'm just looking at the yes column.
Well, yeah, I, I, looking at the yes column, I already added it up. If we said yes to everything, it's, it's still covered by the available reserves. It's just a matter of how much of that do we really want to use?
Yeah.
And so.
You know, as, as somebody who lives and dies by her computer but who knows absolutely nothing about them when they go black, I really like having them at my service. So, I think if he needs it to help me, then it's good.
Well, you'll, this, this person would be coming routinely to our homes to.
Yeah, right.
Or be available on, or be available on the weekend when, when we're trying to study for the city council meeting and the servers are down or something.
Quick question, Brad. How many people are in your department right now?
Currently, including myself, there are six.
There are six.
So, this would be a second.
And this wouldn't, this wouldn't include this, but based on your, your recent testimony, you likely see a twenty percent improvement in service with the addition of this person?
Yes.
So, basically, there's an ROI because you're going to get a lot more work and not, and your people will be freed up to do other, other stuff. So.
Yes.
It's, it's a no-brainer to me.
Yep.
Okay.
Um, we're adding.
I guess we're at a yes.
We're at, yeah, we're adding up all of the items that tentatively we have a yes to, which we will incorporate into our budget proposal. So, we should have an amount here soon.
Take your nitroglycerin before that meeting.
You know, we're.
No, I added it up before. What if we said yes to all these?
You said yes to the, oops.
Yep. We forgot one person.
Is that what they left it at?
Okay. So, that would increase total expenditures, just about a million dollars. So, your total new expenditures would be twenty-three oh forty-four seventy-three. And I'm just going to do one more calculation.
So, that would give us about two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars that we could put towards the reserves if we wanted to.
If you wanted to use all of that, but we're going to show you what a millage rate might look like today. Again, that's going to change. We'll just show you what it might look like today.
Look, this was all based on three point nine one six nine, three point one nine six nine.
That's correct. We're going to show you what an increase in the millage rate.
To do this.
To do this.
But we don't need it.
If you use reserves, you don't.
Correct.
That's correct, if you don't. But if you, if you'd leave the reserves alone, the millage rate increase would be.
Point three one seven two.
As of today.
As of today.
Right, but we.
And again, you can use reserve, I mean, like, again, our, we try not to use them for some of the ongoing costs. So, like, when we presented some of the positions and we have the one-time costs, those would be appropriate for use of reserves. And again, you can always tell us, no, you can use this for operating as well. It's no problem. But the point is, is it's an ongoing expense that you're going to have to look at again next year for any of those positions or things that continue forward. So.
Yeah, that, that's our point. We, as a staff, financial management-wise, we already budget some reserves to balance. Further use of reserves you can do. We would first try to earmark them for one-time costs. We haven't done that yet.
I understand.
We would have to.
I understand. We would still have money left over to put toward the reserves. So, we would still have, you know, two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to put toward reserves above.
The guideline.
Above what, the, the eight and a half percent if we wanted to.
You would.
So, again, if you're relying on one point two million of reserves, and I think this is the point Howard's trying to make and that, as a finance director, I would try to make as well, if you're relying on one point two million dollars of reserves in fiscal year 2020, you're going to be looking at that same use of reserves in 2021 unless something else changes. So, because if you don't have increased revenues or, you know, you're expecting a lot of these expenditures to stay the same, you're going to be looking at that same large difference. And if you've used up your reserves, you won't have that available in the second year.
We would show you that.
Yes.
Right now, based on what we've done tentatively today, if we did nothing else, we're talking about about a million dollars and zero point three one seven two. That's going to change over the next few months.
Yes.
So, we've gotten through the list that we needed to today. In the next meetings coming up, we're going to be doing utilities and the enterprise funds, working our way up to the first meeting in July, when we'll get a taxable value data from the property priser.
And we can go back on these and take a look at these and go, well, okay, we need to sharpen the pencil a little bit more.
You can do that all the way up till September.
Well, I, yes, but I think the most practical part is to do it before July. Because once we hit July, we're pretty locked in.
Yes.
That's when we've already sent the millage rate, you know, we've already sent the trim notices go out in August.
Yeah, we, we do a good, we do a very good job in getting our budget together by July.
Yeah, this, this meeting doesn't stop what we continue to do behind the scenes, you know.
But I, I will have to.
We'll come back to it with other changes as we go along.
I will have to say that I've had some feedback from some residents who said this was the most thorough information that we've had that they can remember for when it comes to budget information. And they really appreciated having this level of detail. So, just wanted to commend you for providing that level of detail.
That was one of the requests.
It was, and you did it. Thank you.
You remember.
It made the discussion a whole lot different.
Thank you. Going forward on this other PowerPoint, we have, we just summed up the budget community conversation recap. I can either go through them. I mean, it's been in the, okay, it's been through before. Okay.
Why don't we go to, we do have the last, we're look, we gave you an update on some sales tax projects and.
I'm going to ask about one.
Okay, so go to the sales tax page.
Oh, so we can go to construction?
Yeah. Not, not. Yeah, not, next one.
Next one, okay.
Okay. That's where we are right now with the sales tax. These are the projects that were voted on by the public. And so, that's what it looks like right now. A lot of these projects still have not been bid out. All we do have in there is a planning number.
I would like to know what the Harbor Walk Lashley Park Marriage Point project is.
Again, that was the committee back in two thousand fourteen and council at the time. That was more of a widening and fixing the harbor walk around that marriage point where the curve is. And that's what that project is. It is the very last one on the list.
The reason why I bring it up is because I've had so many conversations with General Carr and I know how hard he has worked in the South, the Vietnam Mall Committee in raising funds to try to help fund the Veterans Park and the renovation of Veterans Park. And I know that they're really focused on next year, March twenty-ninth or thirty, whatever the date is, it's going to be the, the National Vietnam Veterans Welcome Home. And, and they really would like the Veterans Park to be done and to make it look as, as, because it's, it's, you know, we have the Military Heritage Museum that is just going to be such a showpiece. And, and we've got the Veterans Park that's still not quite a showpiece. And we're going to be putting signage on I-75 and drawing visitors in. And it seems to me, I understand that it was approved, this was approved by the voters. And, and that was what was the priorities in 2014 when they voted. But the Veterans Park project has since evolved. And we're, we don't have the total funding for it in place. And I know that he has a couple of, he's trying to find people to do a couple of projects. I think that the, that I would feel comfortable that our electorate would want us to try to do something that would help keep up with the priorities in overall. And I'd like to shift some of this funding from Marriage Point to help finish Veterans Park. And if we have to put Marriage Point on hold to do that, I just think it. on hold to do that, I just think it would be, and we, no one sees Marriage Point. I mean, it's out in the corner of the park as opposed to, I shouldn't say no one sees it. People, it's actively, the Harbor Walk is actively used. So, I don't, it's like a half a million dollars to do something back there, but.
It's a planning number.
Yeah. I just think that, you know, given the focus we've had on veterans and.
Well, we will be presenting to you in an upcoming meeting, the costs for the various components of Veterans Park Phase Two. We've given them to General Carr. And he has come back with two areas I think he's willing to focus in on. And we're going to show you the cost differential. And that's going to come up at, which, do we have yet which meeting? We don't have it yet. Either the second meeting in May or the first meeting in June. We could probably get it to you.
We're going to meet and go over the information he provided us and then talk with him and see, and get a better idea of what he was explaining in his email back to us.
We'll try and get it to you either the second meeting in May or the first one in June.
Because I know he's having problems getting a contractor to even take these projects on because they say they're too small. And so, I was thinking, well, if we are able to then find some funding to help work on this, it might then find a contractor that would be willing to take these on. And it's such a focal point now, you know. So, it just seems like, it just makes sense to me. I had, I had to bring it up. So, I look forward to that conversation then.
Well, it's going to be on an agenda. It's coming up.
Okay. Because it's going to draw visitors in. And I want it to be, you know, the best it can be.
I think it's a good point.
The only thing else I would point out on the, on this particular slide with the 1% sales tax is there are several projects that currently had portions that were unfunded. Specifically, we have the drainage improvements for Boca Grand.